All right, so I think we have a workshop coming up next.
Can I do a brief introduction of the workshop, please? We have folks here for this important presentation. In spring of 2018, the DABC, the District Advisory Building Committee, approved the selection of Lyceum as the first of the four schools to be renovated. And then in summer of 2018, staff in consultation with community members on the DABC selected Harriman and Associates as the architect on the Lyceum project. Harriman, working with staff, have developed a detailed plan for the Lyceum project. And this proposal was vetted through a community forum and the Lyceum Building Level Advisory Committee, which was formed to help guide the development of the Lyceum project. The project represents, and this is important, a scaled-back interpretation of the conceptual documents that were developed during the BFOF design phase. The scaling back allows the project to retain most of the key features in the original design while maintaining the financial viability of the overall BFOF four school projects approved by the Portland voters. At the December 13th, 2018 DABC meeting, the design, this design, the one that you're going to be seeing today, was recommended for board approval. The board is being asked to review this plan today as a first read in this workshop, and then you will be asked to vote on this at our board meeting on January 8th. A couple of key issues that will be covered in the workshop are that the plan, as it's being articulated, is designed to conform to fair contracting practices consistent with main law. This represents an affirmative step on the part of the board, as these practices are not required from locally funded projects. In late 2017, the board participated in a workshop on the topic of fair contracting led by Bill Stockmeyer, a shareholder at Drummond Woodson. It was Mr. Stockmeyer's informed opinion, based on national and local data, that incorporation of fair contracting does not increase the project costs or significantly limit contractor interest in the project. The plan, as proposed, does not include the work needed on the outside parking and access loop, which, as many of you know, are in disrepair. The project cost in 2019 for the repairs on the outside parking and access loop is estimated to be $1.3 million. There was significant discussion on this topic at the BLAC and DABC level, and the DABC recommended on 12/13 that Harriman and staff develop a phasing proposal to complete aspects of the project using a variety of sources, including bond contingency funds, which, as you'll learn today, are currently approximately $5 million, project contingency funds, and/or district future CIP. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Stilfin, our Director of Facilities, who is going to introduce our Harriman team, and we will have an opportunity to have you understand at depth the project.
So, good evening, Board, Chair, Superintendent. This evening, we're going to talk about transformation. We have the architects from the Harriman group, our lead architect, Mark Lee, here with us this evening, and architect Lisa Sawin, who is the project manager as well for Harriman. So in tandem, they've been working with us through our committees, and I'd like to highlight what the superintendent touched upon, and think of it as a transformation of a school, not a renovation, where we're looking at this BFOF. And what you're going to see here represents not just, you know, what the committee's like, this is, a lot of this came from the community students, there was a lot of involvement here in this presentation. So as we move forward with that, keep that in mind. It's not always about money, and what we can afford and not afford, but look at the concepts here and try to embrace what's being put forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve. And we have a number of slides here to present, but we'll be as efficient as we possibly can. We have some information, just to give you a sense of what we've been up to for the last five months on the design of the Lyceum renovation. And so with that, the points we're going to cover is really a review of the Building Level Advisory Committee presentation. That was really the, most of the content for this was generated at that point. That, we're going to cover the roles of the, very quickly, just the roles of the Building Level Advisory Committee, and how they differ from the District Advisory Building Committee. Lisa is going to share with you a design statement, which was generated through a process with the community, and really is the overarching theme or vision for the project. We find that to be really helpful and important in empowering exercise that governs our work. We'll go through a project update, and that really is going to cover a lot of things, but really is going to dig into the current state of the design of the project. And then we'll look at how does that design meet the stated equity goals for the BFOF projects? And then we'll have an opportunity to answer any questions. So we're going to, again, try to be as efficient as we can. If you could maybe hold questions, if you have them, until we're done, we might answer some of them, and that way we'll all enjoy an earlier evening. So with that, the charter that you folks helped develop on, or was developed for the Building Level Advisory Committee states that its purpose is to create a body of advisors to the larger building committee, and to look at school-specific construction issues, such as traffic flow around the building, location of critical features, color selection, art features. So this is the group that is comprised mostly of members of the Lyceum community, and so we're really digging into almost a granular level of information on the building. The District Advisory Building Committee is a, we see it as a little bit higher level, but its purpose is to advise and make recommendations to you folks, to the Portland Board of Public Education, who have the final authority for all decisions relating to the construction and renovation of the four elementary schools. So those, just again, as we've been working through with both of those committees and up to this point tonight, it's helpful to keep the distinction of roles in mind. Lisa's going to share a little bit about, as I mentioned, the design statement that was developed, and we think, again, it has sort of a great resonance in terms of the school that we're working on, the project, and the community that it represents.
Thank you, Mark. So on, I think it was the end of October, we held a public forum at Lyceum Elementary School, and we had a great turnout. We had, I think it was about 25 to 30 individuals from the community, as well as some of the boards. And what we did is lead everybody through an overview of 21st Century Learning best practices for elementary school. And then we asked them to break into groups, and really think about what word or phrases capture the essence of Lyceum Elementary School. And then each table reported back what those words were, and explained why they had chosen them. Then everyone got, I think it was five dots, and they got to pick their top five words out of anyone's words that were at any of the tables. And from there, we then asked them to look at imagery from the PowerPoint we had presented, pictures, best practices that aligned with sort of that essence of Lyceum. We even offered if people wanted to draw, so we have some really great images, which I wish I had included here, of sketches from architects, from kids, from different folks throughout the community that really spoke to what Lyceum meant to them. And the whole idea was to then take what is, what are those words, what are those phrases, what is that imagery, and create their own design statement. So we, at the end of the session, had three different design statements created by this community group, but they all had sort of a common thread or theme, a lot of it about the nurturing of the community, about gardens. Anyone that's familiar with Lyceum and a lot of your schools here in Portland, there's a lot of attention to the outside learning environment. I personally was blown away on the walkthrough, just by this image alone, but all the gardens around the campus, and how much the staff and students really utilize the outside in their educational experience. So we then took those three design statements, and pretty much took bits and pieces of them, and created a overall design statement, which reads "A nurturing community garden where everyone grows, learns, and explores." And so this has really been sort of our drive-through design, any design statements that we, or any design decisions that we make, we really put through this lens of this statement to make sure that we are making decisions that best represent what Lyceum means to the local community.
It's good to look at that picture and remind ourselves, in six months, we'll have lush vegetation in the sun again. So, yeah, the design statement is kind of like the soul, if the school is the body, so we look at it that way. As Superintendent Botana mentioned, the project is incorporating fair wage practices that are typical for construction of public schools, and that will be part of the project specifications that we develop, and will be enforced through both oversight on the part of the project's owner, the owner's project manager, as well as we'll try to keep an eye on things as well on our end. So that's a part that we're building in. What that looks to do is to establish minimum wages that comply with the main Department of Labor wage standards. We had a good conversation about that at the last meeting, in that, right now, given the current construction climate, it'll be one of those things that'll be less difficult, because with the unemployment rate what it is, there's such a demand for labor that those rates are most easily met by, just by competition. The OPM stands for Owner's Project Manager, and that's a position that assists the school department and this body in overseeing both our work, as well as the work of the construction company doing the work. And so they will help assist Mr. Stilfin in that oversight, and provide periodic updates and reports on the work that's being done. So that, the process on selecting that, there were interviews conducted on Wednesday, November 7th, and the owner's project manager and clerk of the work is a combined position that I believe is, I think probably Mr. Stilfin can offer where the current status of that selection is.
Thank you, Mark. Current selection is Mr. David Lewis, has been selected, and we're working on his agreement to get his schedule together for the project for Lyceum. And this OPM, this clerk of the works, owner's project manager, will be key in the management of any agreements or fair contracting regulations for the contractor, the administrative work that's done to keep track of all of the requirements that exist in that agreement. So if that is moved forward by the board, then that would be part and parcel with myself and Mr. Sherwood and the superintendent on that management.
So I'm going to give you an overview of the schedule, and this is sort of the milestones leading up to the bidding of the project. We were awarded the project in late July. In the past just shy of five months, we have gone through programming, which is where we have reviewed and analyzed the existing studies that had already been done to date. We toured all of the elementary schools, so we could really get a handle on the issue of equity, and understanding what different elementary schools had, did not have, what some of the newer schools, some of their spaces look like, and how we're trying to bring everything up to an equitable level across all the elementary schools. We had meetings with the school administrators to get a handle on sort of their guiding principles and vision. Stakeholder meetings, and we worked through a space allocation workbook, which is essentially a listing of spaces that exist within the school now, spaces that we need to support the programs that exist there, that you may not have the space for, and the square footage of those spaces. From there, we rolled into schematic design, again, where we start to analyze and document existing conditions, understanding what is in the existing building, and then look at starting to put, how are we going to fit this program in the existing building, and what additions may need to occur to accommodate the overall educational vision. We completed that in the beginning of October, and rolled into design development, which we have just wrapped up and provided documents at the beginning of this month. And we're here tonight to talk about wrapping up design development and moving into construction documents, so that we can put the project out to bid within the first quarter of the year. We're targeting February, so that we can have a spring construction date, and go from Project schedule to date, so these are a list of all the meetings that we have conducted. I'm sure we're missing a couple up there, but in general, we meet on a bi-weekly basis with Steve and Doug, just to have a status update on where the project's at, any questions that we may have. We've had multiple meetings with the teachers and staff at the school. On September 20th, we set up what we call a storefront, where we camp out in the school for two days. And we just let the teachers know we're there, we know that they are balancing a lot, so they come in when they can, they meet with us, they tell us how their existing space is working, where they'd like to see improvements, and just really get to understand how they're utilizing their space. It got to the point where several teachers couldn't reach us, so we started going to them throughout the school, and really getting to see them working within their spaces. We then had the community forum, which we went over at October 30th, which reached even more of the teachers and staff from even some of the other schools as well. And then December 13th, we, at that point, had a schematic, or design development floor plan, so we could then take the floor plan back to the staff. We, again, set up for the day, we had staff come in, review the different spaces, understand the flow of the building, what was currently in the project, and then drill down a little bit deeper, looking at specific spaces, what type of casework we had initially proposed, got their feedback on what may work well, what may work better, or what doesn't work at all. And from that, we refined the plan, so that at the end of the day, we have a successful building that really supports the staff and educational programs with N. And then the city planning and pre-application meeting, we will have tomorrow morning. These are a list of the DABC and BLAC meetings, the ones that have been on the schedule. We've had a couple of meetings with the DABC, as well as the BLAC. As was mentioned earlier, our next BLAC meeting is January 10th, and we will be providing a design update, as well as prepping for the public forum. So the next public forum for the Lyceum project is January 17th. And at that point, we'll be providing the public an update on the design of the project before it goes out to bid.
So what Lisa failed to mention is that we had several students drop in on our last staff visit, and one of them, who is an aspiring architect at the age, I think, of about seven, suggested it was important that we include a pool in the design, which hadn't, we hadn't thought of that yet.
An indoor playground.
Indoor playground. So it's great to get all perspectives as we pull this together. So the first thing we did early on was to sort of put all the puzzle pieces down, understand how they laid themselves out, and whether, where that put us relative to a proposed budget. And we'll get into what the available pot of money was, but we wanted to understand, going from the information that was presented or prepared in the study phase of it that led up to the referendum, what would that, what would that look like if we started arranging those pieces? So this is an alternate design option that we came up with, that looked at creating two enclosed courtyards. And that's what you see as that light green, minty-green color at the top of the page, and adding, so the light greener additions. And so it also looked at an addition of a gymnasium that would be separate from a cafeteria at the bottom of the page. And then to the left of the page, you can see a couple of wedge-shaped addition pieces, and those would create a new entrance vestibule, an expansion of a secured administration area right next to the vestibule, entrance vestibule. And then there's a little bump out in the leftmost courtyard, and that was a library location. So that, that was what we called Option A. We put all the pieces down that were talked about as necessary, or as, in addition to those that were necessary, those that were desired from the previous study. That resulted in a total building footprint of about 70,000 square feet, and a construction cost of approximately 22 million. So that was what we called Option A. We also looked at a more simplified approach that only enclosed one courtyard, and it didn't have quite as many of the spaces that were considered for inclusion into the school, but it had the basic, most of the basic minimum spaces that we needed. So we got the square footage down to about 62,000 square feet, at a construction cost estimate of 19 million. The next one we did was, okay, well, what if we just enclosed in a simpler way of connecting the two rear wings of the school, and enclosed only the rear courtyard? And that resulted in slightly more square feet, but maybe it was a little simpler from a construction point of view, and that resulted in a little less money, at about 20 million. So pretty similar in terms of the options B and C. And then we sort of shook things up, because we had available funds that were significantly less than what A, B, or C would estimate for a cost. So we came up with an out-of-the-box idea, that what if we put the gym instead of down at the bottom of the page, what if we put it at the top, and a connector to it? And then we created a new administration entrance over on the bottom-left corner, and so we would have, we'd simplify the additions to the school in just two areas. That resulted in a total square footage of under 60,000 square feet, and a construction cost of about 12 million. So the, these diagrams, all three of them, and we'll share the next one as well, but they have three different shaded areas, and so the minty-green is the new construction additions that I talked about. Then there's the blue area that you see, and that's heavy renovation, and we'll get into a description of what that means in the school in a minute. And then we have the darker gray, which is a light renovation, and then we have the very light, which is the lightest gray. So those gradations indicate the degree to which the spaces are being renovated. This is the evolution of the last scheme that we have adopted the term D2. It's not a droid, it's a building design, but, and at first glance, it looked a little strange to even us, and so we, but we've actually developed it to a point where we think this offers tremendous advantages and transformative value to the school, and we'll share a little bit about how this looks. But what it does do, if I can, I guess I'll use this pointer here. So this creates the new secured entrance vestibule, so the current entrance is right here. And so what it does is expands it out, and puts an administrative presence right at the entrance to the school, so you have a security vestibule to monitor anyone coming in and out of the building. And so it creates a new admin suite, as well as a new nurse location in this area as well. It maintains the existing cafeteria in its current location, and it moves the library to this connector. So we create a new library in this courtyard here, and then a new entrance lobby right here. This wing itself is the kindergarten wing, which has four kindergarten classrooms and one pre-K classroom, with toilet rooms in each of those. And then we have the grouping of four classrooms here, that are the first grade, and then second grade, so we've organized the wings by grade level. And then the further wing has grades three, four, and five. And then we have specials and special services arranged along this primary spine through the building that exists here. But at the upper end of the connector into this courtyard is the gymnasium. So we have an elementary school-sized gym with a stage, at which everyone is applauding the opportunity for having a stage finally at Lyceum, and seating, bleachers seating against this wall right here. And those are the primary features of the plan itself. This is, so what this plan achieved was, it provided the new secure entrance, an expanded administration and nurse area, a welcoming lobby, entrance lobby. It removed a portable that currently exists in the courtyard where this, where the library is shown, right, the portable's about right here. It created a separate gym, it provided a new library and learning commons, it provided updates and renovations to many areas of the school building, and it provided for a sprinkler system, which the building currently is not sprinkled, and an upgraded fire alarm system. So it touches on a lot of areas. This is just a blow-up of that, and this shows, again, the kindergarten wing here, that the lobby itself, so it's a little more detail you can see here. So you come in the entrance, you have access to the cafeteria, you have access to the library, and access to the gym off of this central lobby. So the community functions are organized right at the front of the building, or access to them right at the front of the building.
And one question that came up about sort of the evolution of the plan, and how in this scheme, we were able to get all the classrooms in without the classroom additions, is we took a lot, we took the admin out and made that an addition, we took the library out and made that an addition, and we disconnected the gym from taking over part of the special area right, right in here. And so that freed up what was traditionally already classroom space, and we were able to turn it back to classrooms at that time.
That's a good point. One of the departures that we did from early on in the process is, instead of putting a lot of additions in spaces that were already occupied, it creates a lot more cost, and so we separated the additions just on their own areas of, with minimal attachment to the building itself. The upper portion looks a lot like it does today, but with the exception that we're organizing the clustering of the classrooms to create these academic neighborhoods around grade levels. We also, you'll see pairs of doors at the ends. What that allows us to do is, in the evening, we can certainly lock off portions of the wings, but the other thing that it does is, in the event that we want, for security purposes, to close down those areas at the push of a button, we can close those doors and secure those areas from the rest of the building itself. So, and like we said, there are a series of special services, everything from the ELL programs, resource rooms, literary support, the art and music, whoops, art and music, as well as the faculty workroom. What we heard loud and clear at the last staff meetings is that we didn't have enough staff toilets, and so we doubled the number of staff toilets. So that was a, that was a good suggestion that those living in the building right now, there's, apparently there's a system that they allow folks to know when there's a line forming at the one toilet that's down at this end of the building here. So we've put two there now. This is an overall, if we were looking from above down on the building, you can see the existing footprint that's in that light gray color. And so to give you some orientation, this is that kindergarten wing that we've talked about, this is the entrance to the building. So right now, the bus loop comes in right here. This is the courtyard where the current portable is, and this is that connector with the library and the gymnasium on this edge of the building. And so again, those are the two primary volumes that are being added. And initially, we looked at what are the opportunities for these courtyard spaces right here, and we looked at what had been done before in some elementary schools, and one elementary school in particular had the same strategy of creating these tight interior courtyards that have vegetation, and so the picture of what that might look like is this. And so that's approximate scale and in character of what those might be. And with that, we started thinking about what those might translate into in this design.
So at the community forum, we were introduced to the Greening Committee that's at Lyceum. There's a group of volunteers who work very hard to keep up with all the gardens and the design of all the gardens on the outside of the building. And their biggest concern was that we were going to impact those gardens and do away with them, when in fact, we love the gardens, and we wanted to build on what they had already started. And so that's where these different courtyards that you could see in the plan just really started to excite us. And so this is a first pass by our landscape designer as to what these gardens may look like. And so when, as we go into the new year, we're going to meet with the Greening Committee, and just start to charrette with them as to what these spaces may look like, how we can get them involved, because they're the ones that maintain it, they're the ones that understand what it's going to take to really, to build this, and so figure out how we can partner with them to create these great outdoor learning environments between the building. And so here's the example of what would be on the library side. So I didn't explain this one, this is the one on the side of the, between the kindergarten wing and the library, sort of creating this radial plan. The light kind of gray color would be what we called hardscape, or possibly concrete, and then creating some different elevations with the earth to have a variety of scale within the courtyard. And then on the other side, which would be between the library and the first and second grade wing, having some trees and a pathway in between here, as well as sort of a covered outdoor learning area. Paying a lot of attention to the fact that we want to make sure that we have, we use the Paying a lot of attention to the fact that we want to make sure that we use the vegetation as somewhat of a screening from the classroom side to the library side, just so that everyone gets to enjoy that connection to nature without any distractions. So, here's a rendering of the connector, as we call it. So, this is really trying to, again, tie back to what we had as our design statement, a nurturing community garden where everyone grows, learns, and explores, and really celebrating that connection to outdoors. And so, this is, as you're leaving the lobby headed towards the gym, that brick building in the back would be the gym. This is your library along here with some great pops of color, huge picture windows, which on the library side serve as reading benches for the students to cozy up with a book. 21st century best practices really emphasize variety of spaces, different scaled spaces for different types of learning, whether it be one-on-one group, you know, large group learning, small group learning, and just the fact that people learn differently in different types of spaces. So, we really tried to create those spaces anywhere we could throughout the school. This is if the gym is now behind us and we're looking back at the library. So, in some ways, if you keep your eye on the green window, it's going to be sort of the orienting piece throughout all of these renderings. This is what we are calling the cave space or the nest, sort of that very small group learning area to where a teacher can pull off with a couple students or a small group. This is all pinup space here. You have connection to the courtyard on this side and views out to this side, as well as in after-hours, it serves as a space outside the gym to where people can congregate, whether it be during a performance or a game, and then finding opportunities for kids to do, whether it drawings or lessons, within the hallway as well. This is in the Learning Commons, which is what we term the library these days. Really, the library has a variety of spaces where kids can either read or learn. This is, again, the green window looking from the library out to the connector and beyond. You can see the courtyard. So, really continuing that connection to the outdoors and really using those courtyards is almost a wayfinding so you know where you are within the building at all times. This is in the connector, looking back through that green window into the library. So, you can see the door beyond, which connects you to that courtyard between the library and the first and second grade. And you can see the kids in the windows and the variety of furnishing where they can sit and read. And then, this is when you walk into the school. This is a large group learning area. It's also the lobby of the building. And so, we've created this tiered seating here with pinup space beyond. So, a teacher can bring a whole class out there, do a different lesson, great natural light, or they can bring multiple classes. Or, again, after-hours, if there's something happening in the cafeteria, it's overflow space for that as well.
So, on those previous images, what they represent is not just pictures for us to look at to imagine what it might be, the transformed spaces, but we also created a virtual model. And Mr. Stillfin had the opportunity last Friday, I think it was, to try actually walking through the space. And so, it was really, really fun. And our next step is to be able to share that with the staff as well, so they get a real sense of what it's like to be in the space before we ever build it. So, it was a lot of fun. And I think Steve took some Tylenol after, because virtual reality can do that to you. But, so, looking at the broader picture of how does the plan that we've developed meet the equity goals of the project? And this was the sort of very high-level BFOF project objectives. And that was to transform the elementary schools, ensure that they have up-to-date security systems and meet fire safety standards, preserve the sense of neighborhood schools, and make sure that the children stay connected to those communities, and then leverage state and local funding. So, those were the big-picture items. Drilling down a little bit, and this is, again, all stuff that was done prior to us coming onboard, the project objectives identified, making sure that we had enough capacity to meet the enrollment of the school, make sure that all spaces met accessibility and universal access standards, create a separate gymnasium, ensure that the buildings met a standard for security, create separate music and art rooms so that it wasn't art on the cart or going music door-to-door, create outdoor learning spaces or enhancing the ones that are there, making sure the buildings were sprinkled and had up-to-date fire alarm systems, improving the pedestrian and vehicular circulation around the building itself. And Lisa touched on some of these 21st-century spaces, including small group spaces, special education spaces, and performance space. As we first sat down with all of those objectives and all of the demands of space in the building, we also had to look at what were the available funds. And one of the most important parts was to understand the context of this budget relative to the total pot of money, so that we were sure that we didn't get to the last project and somehow have used all the funds and short-change any of them. So, we had to really think long-term about how we were going to escalate the cost of construction. And what we've seen most recently is a tremendous increase in the cost of construction, and it's really happened over the last two years. But, significantly last summer, there were tremendous increases over above what we would normally see for the cost of, in school construction in particular, but construction in general. And in that, we arrived at a project cost for the Lyseth project of 15 million, just over 15 million. When you back out all the other fees, and they're broken down into three sections, one is the administrative fees, and that has everything to do with new furniture or new technology. There's a contingency that we have to reserve for unforeseen conditions as we renovate. It would be like renovating in your house or something and then finding conditions behind the walls that you didn't know were there. So, we have to set aside funds for that, as well as a cushion to absorb any changes in the market conditions for pricing. So, that, all of those add up to the first piece, which is the administrative fees. The second piece is mostly the professionals' fees. And so, that's the fees that Herriman is charging, as well as fees to remove hazardous materials in the building should we find any, the survey of the site, testing of the soils that we're going to be adding new construction to, and then the owner's project manager and clerk of the work position that we talked about as well. So, those fees also have to come off of that total project budget. And then, that, so we subtract those out, and what we're left with is the money that's available for the construction portion itself. And so, from that 15.25 million, that comes down to about 11.7 million. That's our target right now. So, we're trying to get all of those wishes into a budget of 11.7 million. Not an easy task. So, this summarizes the different options that we had explored and a kind of overview of what did they have and what didn't they have. I think the takeaways from this slide, I'm not going to go into a great level of detail, but had to do with the square footage. And as we pared down the square footage, we gave up certain spaces. Those spaces are included on the columns to the right. So, the last item that we got to, option D2, what it does not include that was originally conceived of in the prior concept study was six small group rooms. And those are things that, again, we couldn't include, just, again, trying to pare down the space to achieve that $11.7 million budget. What we had to put in that wasn't originally conceived of as well, this is where the magic comes in. When the reduction from the original amount for the BFOF was established to when it was lowered, there was a reduction of the second floor of the Lyseth concept. And that second floor with it was the idea that if you look at projection enrollments or when someone looked at projection enrollments at that time, the idea was the population of the school would be going down, and you wouldn't need as many classrooms. The problem with that logic is that at opening day, we still have all those students. And so, in two years, we can't just put them on hold until the population goes down. So, we had to actually include five more classrooms than originally was conceived of into the building. So, I'll go through this chart as quickly as I can. But, we broke down the equity items that were asked for in the study into, I think there were three primary areas. And the first one, we call architectural. And so, did we remove the portables? Yes. Did we add a pre-K classroom? Yes. And do we group the classrooms by grade? Yes. Did we reconfigure the main entrance in the administration suite for security, create a new library and an elementary-school-sized gym? Yes. So, the green dots indicate we did it. Did we provide new finishes throughout the building, including flooring, ceiling, paint, lighting, and casework or the shelving units in some of the classrooms? We partially did. When we showed you those floor plans and we said that there were the gray colors, the darker gray and the lighter gray, the lightest gray doesn't include new finishes. And so, there are about 15 classrooms right now that don't include those new finishes throughout the building. So, while we are achieving a lot of new finishes, there are some classrooms that will look just like they do today or are very close to the way they look like today. We didn't need to provide an elevator because we weren't dealing with the second floor. We did provide new toilet rooms throughout the building for staff and the kindergartens, but we didn't create new, or we didn't refresh the toilet rooms, call them gang toilet rooms that are in the building, the multi-user toilet rooms. We did provide an accessible toilet with a roll-in shower in the nurses' office. We will have ADA signage and hardware throughout the building. We did not need to provide a firewall to separate the building. And the next item, nine, is did we improve the exterior envelope insulation? And we did not. That was one of those items that in the existing classrooms to remain, that we're not providing new finishes, the exterior walls are not getting the insulation. And we will say that in reviewing this item, the school has recently had new, or improved the thermal performance of its windows. And the windows in the classroom in Lyseth occupy everywhere from about three feet up to about nine feet. And so, the lower three feet and the upper two feet above the ceiling, we are not insulating. Again, it was one of those reductions to get us down to 11.7 million. The performance space, we have a gym with a stage, and we do have a separate gym. So, those are the architectural items. The next ones, we call utility. And we are sprinkling the building, we are upgrading the fire alarm system, and we are making sure that we have appropriate exit signage and emergency egress lighting. We are providing security systems and with closed-circuit television or cameras in the building throughout. We're improving the existing unit ventilators or ventilation system that's there, but we are not providing a new heating and ventilation system throughout the building or centralized system. That was, again, another point that we heard as we were dealing with the staff. One of the consistent comments we heard was the difficulty they have in controlling the temperature in the building. And so, we will look the best we can to accommodate that, but a lot of the equipment that we're showing in the classrooms that are to remain is existing equipment. And the reason, and we'll talk about it a little bit in a future here, or in the next couple of slides, but the idea is that we tried to segregate scope items that could be addressed in future capital projects. And so, that was one of the ways that we tried to understand, well, okay, if we're not doing it, we want to make sure we haven't precluded the opportunity to do it in the future as well. So, new heating distribution piping, new controls for equipment, all of the HVAC stuffs, that, again, is a partial renovation that we're doing. We are providing a new electrical service, and so, we're improving the electrical capacity of the building itself. We are not providing all-new lighting in the classrooms, but in the new spaces and then in the heavily renovated spaces, we are providing all-new lighting. Again, that was an item that we understood could probably be upgraded, potentially even with utility rebates in the future. And we are providing all-new telecommunication wiring throughout the building. And lastly, the site. So, one of the items, I think, that Superintendent Pontana said at the beginning is that the site work is not currently in the scope of work. And that simply was, after we asked the estimator to price the project, we just hadn't included that, and it came back at about 12 million. So, it was a matter of, okay, if we wanted to add the site, what of the current plan would we remove? But, the only thing that we thought we could remove would be the gymnasium from that to compensate for the additional cost of the site work. So, right now, that's how the current design is laid out with the 11.7 million for the building itself. And as we're not doing the work for the parking lot and the drives, we haven't added additional ADA parking spaces. We are enhancing, as Lisa talked about those two courtyards, we're enhancing the outdoor play and learning areas. We're providing new electrical and underground telephone upgrades. We are replacing some water lines. We are replacing or upgrading some of the stormwater catchment around the building itself. And the last item was an exterior shed. And we all thought that that's probably something that could easily be added in the future and something you wouldn't necessarily want to bond for 30 years. So, what does the whole building's upgrades include? So, this is what's happening everywhere. So, we are doing a public address system, we're doing new data wiring, we're doing a new clock system, not just one clock for the building. We are doing a fire sprinkler system throughout the building, fire alarm, security cameras. In the areas that we identified with the blue and the heavy renovation, we're doing whole-building upgrades, everything that I just talked about on the first bullet to the list. We're providing new finishes. So, those areas do get a full gut and rebuild. And that includes flooring, ceiling, paint, caseworks, lighting, mechanical systems, plumbing fixtures. So, that's the administration area. We'll get those. Any addition, as well as the heavy renovations, will look like brand-new spaces.
And the whole building upgrades are really focused on life safety. So, making sure that we have those life safety systems throughout the whole school.
The light renovation is the whole building upgrades, the safety and security, new finishes including flooring paint and new ceilings, new light fixtures, and typical new building systems. The very light, which is that lightest gray, just has the whole building upgrades as well as replacement of outlets, so they meet code with tamper-resistant outlets in the classrooms.
I was just going to go back for a second. What drove the very light versus the heavy, the light versus the heavy reno was really, the heavy reno was driven by where we're trying to fit the new program spaces within the building. So, if a wall had to move, it triggered a heavy reno. So, it wasn't that we were just randomly picking rooms that got heavy renos and light renos. It was really driven by how to get the scope within the project, which then drove the heavy reno, knowing then those lighter reno areas could be done at a later time.
So, this highlights the hierarchy of priorities. The first one, dealing with the capacity, we had to make sure that we met the physical spaces that we needed to have in the building. That was the absolute minimum that we needed to provide. The next dealt with life safety systems and security systems. Then, looking at creating flexible 21st-century learning spaces, those spaces that aren't the primary classroom, but that are important learning spaces throughout, both in the building as well as even the outdoor learning spaces. Then, it was additions required for missing program space, and then the renovation spaces, going down the priority list, then building systems, then utilities, and then site improvements. And really, the idea here is that we had this one opportunity to make sure that we could capture and provide the appropriate learning spaces. We could either provide those or we could do all the improvements or upgrades to the utilities. But, the challenge is that we could spend the 11.7 million and more just providing upgrades to the utilities and not actually transform the learning environment itself. And so, that's really what we're trying to do with this listing of priorities, is really to understand an approach. And that's, again, what D2 tries to do, is look at an approach to really leveraging the most value from the available funds that we had to transform the learning environment. And so, when people walk into the building after the renovation, we think they're going to be pretty excited about it and really have fun in the spaces that are provided. Lisa's going to quickly go through this. This is a lot of the same elements that we talked about, but it's whether it's achieved and what the estimated cost if it's not achieved.
Thanks, Mark. I'll try to be quick. So, this is really just looking at option D.2. So, removal of the portables, adding space for the pre-K and the group classrooms, that was achieved. The reconfiguring of the main entrance, admin suite, security improvements, new library and separate elementary-school gym. So, a lot of those are the additions that we created for those missing program elements that was achieved. New finishes throughout the building, flooring, ceiling, paint, lighting, and casework or shelving, as Mark put it. This is partially achieved. So, in those areas that we talk about, that heavy renovation, these are the areas that are receiving the new finishes, as well as the corridors where we have to replace the ceiling to get the sprinkler system in the building. We've put new finishes in there as well. Elevator was not applicable, as there's not a second story on the design. New toilet rooms throughout the building for staff and students, included in the kindergarten and ISP. This was This was partially achieved, so we have provided new toilets in the kindergarten as well as additional staff toilets, and the student restrooms are remaining as they are. Accessible toilet for the room in the nurses' office, that was achieved. ADA signage and hardware achieved. Firewall is not applicable to this design. The existing exterior wall will be insulated from inside to improve overall R-value. I want to clarify that the additions will have a high R-value, both in the wall and the roof. It's the existing building where we're doing the renovation that we haven't added additional insulation into the existing wall assembly. This would have to replace all the finishes on the wall, all the casework. It really triggers that heavy renovation. And so in the areas where we are doing the heavy renovation, we are carrying that as an alternate right now. And an alternate is something that we can fold into the project later if funds permit.
It's an alternate. Yeah, I think, so the areas where we're gutting.
Not in the base. It says an alternate.
Yeah. And the numbers that are referenced in the presentation here are from an additional facility study that was done prior to us coming onboard as well, so.
And the dollar value that was provided in that study was just to study this further. There was not a cost provided for that. Performance face that was achieved off of the gymnasium. Sprinkler, the building, fire alarm, exit signage, emergency egress, so these are really those life safety systems we talked about have been achieved. Security systems upgrade and CCTV integrated into district system, achieved. Existing unit ventilators will be removed, high-efficiency systems provided. This is partial, so this is in the additions as well as the major renovation areas. We also have an ad alternate to replace unit ventilators as well as controls, which is another line item in the light renovation areas. Upgrade, Lyman Moore heating plant was achieved. New hot water distribution piping was not achieved. ERVs provide ventilation. This was partially achieved. This was done on the additions. AC provided in select spaces. The spaces that were identified in the study were the library as well as the admin. The admin is air-conditioned as part of the base. Whoops, just lost feed. There we go. The air conditioning is provided in the administration addition as part of the base. The library is an ad alternate at this point. DDC energy management system. So these are the controls for the climate control within the building or the heating unit ventilators. Right now, you have pneumatic controls. When we replace the unit ventilators, we will provide DDC controls for those systems. And again, the part of the ad alternate is to replace the DDC or the pneumatic controls with DDC in those areas of light renovation. Existing plumbing fixtures reused, domestic hot, new high-efficiency domestic hot water heater achieved. Electric service equipment upgraded to serve the existing and future needs, achieved. Classroom lighting, daylight harvesting enhanced for educational AV systems. This is partial, so in the areas where we are replacing the ceilings, we have achieved this. Building telecom, dedicated climate control for teledata, wire, wireless network, voice-over-IP phone, intercom, AV and sound enhancement systems have been achieved. And then we've gone over this, the site work is not part of the base. What is part of the base regarding site work is any of the site around the building that has been impacted by the design, as well as the bus loop. That will be part of the base because our addition impacts the existing bus loop. Therefore, we do have to modify its location. Enhancement to outdoor play and learning is achieved. Electrical and underground telephone and communications upgraded, achieved. Existing water line abandoned and a new run. We are reusing the domestic, but a new one is provided for fire sprinkler. Existing steam lines have been replaced. Stormwater drainage system updated. This is partially achieved around the building. And then the exterior shed was not achieved.
So I know we went through those lists, and it seems like we went through them multiple times, but everyone here should well understand, I guess, what is being proposed for the scope of the work. As Lisa said, the site work around the building that was originally developed and permitted through the city included improvements to the parking area between Lyman Moore and Lyseth, included separating bus and parent in a more direct way in front of the Lyman Moore, creating a new parking area directly to the right side or the west of, or the east, rather, of Lyman Moore, and then some stormwater improvements along the edges here and all the way out and around. One thing that we were asked to do is come back and look at a potential phasing strategy for these improvements. So could we take the overall strategy and break it down into smaller phased elements? Some of the work has already been done. There's a portion of, so the new parking has been created, and improvements have been made along the edge of the ball fields up to the back of the building right here. So that work is already done. We call that phase one. Phase two would look at creating, this is one possible scenario of separating the scope, where we, as Lisa talked about, all the work around the building itself that we need to do in order to create the new additions onto the building and move the park, the bus drop-off here. That would be all part of potential phase two, as well as some improvements at the front of the entire campus where you come in and right next to Junior Street where there's an alignment issue right now. So some safety improvements and flow improvements at the front of the, as well as the creation of a stormwater treatment area that's necessary for the impervious, to treat the impervious surface and the water coming off of that impervious surface before it gets into the groundwater system. The next piece that we would look at doing that could be phased is then the connection of the front improvements to the area around, directly around the building itself, and that creates the separate travel lanes for cars and buses. And then lastly, would be an opportunity to improve the pavement at the parking area itself. So those are some ideas of taking and how could we break the site scope of work down into smaller pieces that could be achieved at, either in combination or separately over a period of time? Yeah? We have not yet costed those out. That's the next step. We're actually meeting with the City of Portland Planning Department tomorrow to actually just talk to them about the strategy and get their thoughts about moving in that direction. So that's, but our next step is to start looking at what would those pieces cost. And we know that phase one that was done was about just under $1 million, somewhere around $900,000. So finally, our last slide just brings forth the BLAC recommendation. And the BLAC, when we met with them, the overwhelming consensus after much dispirited discussion on the presentation that mostly we've given you tonight was to move forward with the Plan D2. And at that time, they recommended that additional funds be sought to try to build the parking in that area in the front, the site work that was excluded from that. So that was their recommendation to the District Building Advisory Committee. And then there was, again, great discussion at the DABC regarding the scope and what the pieces were in and the appropriate way to try to address all of these issues. And I believe you have that language before you as well. And so with that, we'd love to entertain any questions you may have. Yes, Ms. Davis?
You mentioned issues around sort of heating and temperature control in the existing building. And it sounds as though we're only going to be, only the new sections will have insulation in them. Can you just describe the current state of those walls and what the R-value of those walls and those roof areas are?
Sure.
And will be, and what the difference will be?
Yeah. So the areas, the building was constructed at a time when energy costs were much lower than they are now, and it was very common for schools to be constructed in essentially a 12-inch, it's about a foot-wide wall. The interior, and it's a solid masonry wall. And so the interior eight inches is a concrete block, kind of like a, I called it a cinder block, or some people know it as sort of those eight-inch by 16-inch blocks that we see all over the place. And then the outside is four inches of brick. And while it feels like that doesn't have any insulating value, it has some, not a tremendous amount, but it has some. Above the, yes, Ms. Davis?
Because most people think in R-value. What's the R-value of that?
Oh, yeah, no, I'm sorry. Thank you. So that's, so R is a factor. It's a resistive value. So it resists the flow of heat from a high temperature to low temperature. And that, the R-value of that wall section is probably in the teens, low teens. And so that gives you a sense of where it is. A new exterior wall that we would build nowadays has a R-value of somewhere around 20. So that's our goal. And that has to be averaged over the entire wall of a building. Where windows occur, obviously, the transmittance of temperature is much greater and so, but the overall R-value of a new wall system is around an R-20 as required by code or higher. The R-value of a roof right now is around 30. The building was re-roofed in the not-too-distant future, and so insulation was looked at that time. So it was improved over its original R-value of the roof, but not to an R-30. And so overall, those rooms aren't going to change the character of what they have right now in terms of, we're not improving the insulating value of the walls in those areas.
And when I'm looking at the square footage, we're not improving the insulation in 75% of the building?
That's probably right.
That's what the numbers say here, that new construction is the only place where we're actually bringing this up to what would be standard. And we're going to leave the rest of the building, which is 75% of the building, the majority of the building, will not be insulated to today's standards. Correct?
With the caveat that we have that alternate price, so we're asking for a price.
In the current, what we're going to vote on, we're not going to vote on the, unless we make a change, my understanding is, in the current budget, we are not insulating 75% of this building to current industry school standards. I mean, this is not, I know you're working within a budget. I just want the board and the public to know what it is we're doing. Because I think energy is something that's very important to this community. I think when you talk about the fact that there are already issues around temperature control, and we're going to have 25% of the building, which is going to be insulated very different than the other 75% of the building, I could anticipate that balancing that load, how you're going to keep those cold classrooms where students will be spending time warm enough while not overheating the library, you know, those kinds of things. As well as just, I think it's important for us to know, this is a long-term building system that will cost us every single year going forward. I don't know, and I'd be curious, in what the current energy usage is for that building. How much do we spend for this building? We're not going to spend any less for this building, either in heating. And once again, and we, even with Hall Row School, we didn't go there as we might have. The board did not air-condition the building, but we also, you know, we aren't going to make this easy to heat, and it is not a building that would be air-conditioned so that it's really truly usable in all parts of it for the summer. And where this is not new construction, at least Row, we could site and we could do a lot of environmental things to, you know, offset the cooling costs, but this is what it is.
I think those are accurate observations.
Okay.
I had a follow-up question on that. I noticed that in none of the options that you consider, options A through D2, did you consider insulating the exterior wall? Can you speak a little bit to that?
Yeah, actually, let me go back to that chart. That shows there are dots here, I think. Do I have the, right here? So as part of our estimating, we didn't look at furring that out and insulating that. So that was, again, just at the very basic to understand what the cost of the construction would be. That's not to suggest that we couldn't have looked at that. It just meant that that 20 or 22 million would have jumped up to a higher figure. And it's a pretty easy exercise to look at at that really early stage of the design. So I think it was just a matter of the value that we got, what, didn't include looking at tearing all of the finishes and everything off of the exterior walls and adding new walls with insulation on them. Yes, Ms. Davis?
And so would it be correct, I mean, in the light and the very light where we're just doing paint or whatever, but even in the other renovations, we're doing work we'd have to undo if we actually did want to insulate the building?
That's correct. And so that's why at, and when we looked at the project budget, our hope and desire is that there may be funds available at, if we get a favorable bid, that we could, you could have that decision to include. But you're absolutely right. If you don't put it in now, you'd have to take off a layer of wallboard to try to insulate behind it.
So we'd essentially have to undo work that we're proposing to do. Would you, I mean, you build schools all over the state of Maine. Do you recommend to clients to continue with a building with no insulation?
I think what we try to do is provide the different options to a client and so that, and what we typically would do is come up with a whole idea of what the project scope might include, and then we would estimate it, and then we would present that. In this case, what we're trying to do is almost work sort of bottom-up and top-down. We have a budget number that we're trying to understand, how can we accomplish the most we can? But then we're also looking at what all the needs are. And so somewhere in the middle, we're trying to find that. So in most of our projects, what we would do is we would say, okay, we would recommend that you improve the thermal efficiency of the building and do all these improvements to the educational environment. And this is what the cost would be. In this case, we have a cost, and so we're trying to balance all those.
So basically, our budget has driven us to not make the kinds of energy-saving improvements that one would normally make, and certainly we did make in our new schools.
That's a very fair observation.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Figador?
Could you give us a just ballpark estimate if we were gonna do the?
So this is really putting the test here. And so this square foot area, oh, I'm trying to think areas. I'm going to use about a $12 a square foot, and we have a building or a wall height of approximately 10 feet, so that's $120 for every foot of wall that we have. And so if we were to look at these wings and approximate the length of the wing as being approximate, I'm trying to think how many classrooms we have here. Eight, so let's say that it's 200 feet for rough numbers. So 200 times that, 120 is 1600, and multiply that times 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and say seven because we have the ends of the building. And then we've got 9, 10, because we have along the wall. Let's say 12 times that value of, this is, see, this is how it happens when you do a napkin. A napkin here. So 1600 times about, so I would estimate that that's probably to the tune of 60,000 to 100,000. I'm going to give a big range just because that's really, but.
And I would just like to point out for any kids that are up past their bedtime, that this is why mathematics really matters, and that you just saw math at work in this man's head. So for those who think that it doesn't matter, it really does. We have two examples today. In the finance committee, you saw Alicia doing that, and now Mark.
Thank you, Superintendent Pontana. I think that, I think there's a cost of $15,000 to come up with that price. Earlier that was estimated.
This study said it would take about $15,000 to just investigate that, just because there's so many, as we start to take all this stuff, there's so many systems that we just don't even know about. So there'd be a pretty healthy contingency on any of those numbers.
Right. Hopefully, the listening public will take that into consideration too. Any other questions?
One of the options of phasing in parking lots, I heard you still have to get back from the city. So can you give us some detail about what that 1.4 includes? It sounds like I don't want to do this case, but I have a great work. Also, I wanted to know the current number of parking spaces, what we will end up with.
So I don't believe, just, again, this is, I haven't counted the spaces, but I don't believe it's significantly going to impact the number of spaces. I think the big, the big gain in spaces was on the new parking area to the east of Lyman Moore. And so that, that's really where the numbers were gaining. And so that, that's really where the numbers were gained. What the aisles do is actually create safer travel lanes. One of the other big areas that is, part of that is the lighting. If anyone's walked out of the building right now, there's only building lighting at the face of the buildings, as well as a very small amount on the exit lane. And so that's part of it. Drainage in the parking area is also an important part of this. Curbing, striping, signage, and some small amount of landscaping is included in all of that. So there's a lot that you don't see at the, that's underground, all the stormwater structures and the piping, the filtration systems to help treat all of that. So all of that is infrastructure that you don't see. So that's what adds up to that 1.4 million, as well as, again, the stuff that you do see in the top. Mr. Tilfman?
Just to clarify, the number that you see in the table is from a, from the city, in their engineers who did Phase 1. So it was a D-DECK total from the total amount that was put forward. So there was approximately $960,000 spent on one, and the remaining is 1.37, or approximately 1.4 million to do all of the rest there. And I do have a breakdown from their civil engineer, Wright Pierce, that isn't in this packet.
Davis?
And I'm assuming that that's been designed to minimize the stormwater fee costs and so on?
Yes, it is. It takes, it includes all of the improvements for stormwater to the creek. And that's when architects are talking about impervious and replacing from roofs to pavement, and where the water goes and how it goes out of the site. So yes, it does.
So that we can get as much-
Don't go, because I want to, I want to make sure that the board understands the potential sources for funding that work. I mentioned it in the introduction, but I just want to be, I want people to be able to understand what are the potential sources for paying to do that work. Because this is what we discussed with the, with the DABC the other day, and including the option of taking 1.4 million now from the contingency fund, which the DABC did not recommend that we do. And so absent that, that's why we're phasing. Absent that, what are the different sources for being able to pay for that?
Whatever, whatever the numbers come in on the D-2, if approved, will tell us the number against the budget. And then it's the overall BFOF reserves, if we don't touch the individual project contingency.
And just to make sure that what we have before us is a budget. That's not a bid for what, that's our hoped-for budget. The bids could come in less, they could come in more. And so, and we don't know. It's a different, it's a, in fact, a very tight construction, I mean, we talked about that at the Building Committee. It's a very tight construction environment. Finding contractors who can do this kind of work may not be easy. Getting prices may not be easy. Their subs may not be, you know, there's enough work to go around. And so, you know, we don't know where this will come in. This is our hoped-for.
Yep. Excellent point. One of the items that we looked at was that 10% contingency to not only accommodate potential changes in the market conditions of pricing, but also, we're supposed to set some of that aside to actually, for the unforeseen conditions in the building that we'll find, we will uncover as we move through the construction. So it's a pretty tight, at 11.7, we have a contingency of just around $1 million to try to get all that. As one member of the experienced architect, a member of the DABC mentioned, he thought, again, that's a pretty tight number to have as you move into this. Yeah, Mr. Haskins?
Thank you. Can I ask about the final capacity and how that compares with today's capacity?
So one of the things that we looked at was, the very first step was, we sat down and looked at the enrollment figures. We looked at the number of classrooms that are currently, that currently exist. And what this represents is the same number of classrooms with the exception of the pre-kindergarten classroom. That's in addition to what is there now. So the capacity is expanded in that way. The enrollment data we have suggests that we're, we have enough before we start to see the trend go down. And, and Lisa, if you remember those numbers, they're just above 500, so.
Thank you. I was just asking because, you know, we reaffirmed our commitment to expanding pre-K, so it's great to have that one classroom. I might prefer to see two, but-
We tried the first scheme, we looked at actually having two in some of those A, B, and C.
And can I ask about a, if there's any single-use bathroom for students?
That's a good question. So the primary single-use bathrooms are in the kindergarten, pre-case, we have five of them there. The other ones are adult-size fixtures. We haven't included the smaller fixtures, the issue, that may be something we can look at. But right now, we do have six single-user toilets. In addition, we have a single-user toilet room in the nurse's office.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Davis?
Sorry, go ahead. Well, I was just going to mention that we had, right, yeah, we have this new transgender and transgender expected students policy.
Absolutely, it seems to be reasonable to look at that.
Yep, agree.
Ms. Bondo?
I just want to know how long, if the budget has been approved, how long the renovation can be done? A year, two years? Was that the frame?
Yeah, so right now, we're looking at putting this project out to bid in, at the end of February. And so the contractors will price it. We hope that construction starts in the spring, late spring. And so the duration, now we're anticipating 24 to 30 months of construction. Yeah, they'll be in the building during that. And what we, the strategy is to create some space, be able to use that space to empty out other portions, renovate that, push some people over here, and kind of keep that going around the whole time, so. And that's one approach. The other approach is to find space somewhere else and let the contractors go in and renovate the whole building. That costs a lot of money and is pretty disruptive in terms of finding that space. Yeah, Mr. Haskins?
Thanks. I just had one last question about the existing water line. Do we know much about the current state of that and if the water is good quality?
Yeah, that question came up, and everything that we know suggests that it's not a potential problem. What we usually see are, the water lines are not infrastructure that we typically see a lot of deterioration. Where we do see a lot of deterioration is in the steam line. So there was a steam line that went from Lyman Moore to Lyceum, and that, you constantly have to replace just because of the impurities in the steam itself and the corrosion that creates. And so that's been replaced this past summer. So that, that's the area. So right now, there aren't any signs that indicate that that water line is problematic.
Thank you so much.
Okay, maybe I have a question. If you were going to add a second pre-K classroom, use it with, later-
Yep.
And you are assuming a decline in student population, is there a way that you could, I mean, this is maybe asking, we don't know, so is there a way that you could see configuring that such that you're maintaining the grade groupings?
Yeah, what that would most likely look like, and I'll give you my impression, and then Lisa will give you her impression of what maybe that would look like. But what, what that might look like, so right now, you can see that we've fully utilized this area of the building. So there's a couple ways you can do it. You could, you could see that there's a setback from the property line right here. So we're pretty constrained with respect to trying to add onto this wing right here. There is a resource room right here, and there's, it's, while it's probable that you might be able to expand that, the challenge is that the kindergarten and pre-K rooms are traditionally larger, they're 1,000 square feet, that's sort of minimum space requirements. And that's larger than most classrooms. Most classrooms are around 800 or more square feet, but 800 is the size of these. And so, so the challenge is that you'd have to look at creating a kindergarten room somewhere. Probably what we would do is bump one of the kindergarten rooms to become something else. And that kindergarten room would probably move down. If we wanted to keep it central to the building, we would probably, we may put it in this area, or may look at trying to put it into the one, two wings. So that, that's, just thinking off the top of my head, that's sort of a strategy, I think, that we would do. The other option to look at is, would you have, would you need all four kindergartens? Or if your enrollment drops, are you able to recover one of those immediately, just convert it? Because the pre-K room looks just like a kindergarten room for the most part.
I would agree with that. We're really constrained in this area right here with this setback. There's not much we can add in this area, so trying to find that room within the existing building is best.
But I will say, what we, you can see dashed here is the opportunity for future expansion. So the idea that you could add that bar that we were showing at in one of the early schemes and connect these two wings and enclose that courtyard. And so, so we think we can probably get around seven or eight classrooms in connecting that. If there are no further questions, we thank you very, very much for the opportunity to-
Yeah, let me just make sure. So this is a first read, so we are going to ask you to act on this at the next board meeting. So it's very important that you sort through any questions or concerns that you have ahead of that. These guys, Steve, myself, are available to, you know, answer any questions that you might have. But, you know, setting us, sort of setting this back is then endangering our timeline for being able to get the bids out and being able to break ground on this project in the spring of this year. And so I just want to, you know, make sure that any questions that you have get answered ahead of the next board meeting, that if there's anything that we need to price out, changes that we need to make, that we know, because, you know, sort of coming out of that meeting with those questions and those changes will jeopardize our ability to meet timelines on this.
I just thought I'd make a comment as a parent, and I said this in front of the district-level advisory committee, but as a parent and someone who's been very engaged in the discussion in the community about the four school renovations, and I'm seeing these plans and looking at the transformation of this space is really exciting to me. I know it's not, it's not everything that any of us want, but it is so much. And I think the prioritizing the learning spaces is absolutely the right place, the right way to do it. And just from spending a lot of time in one of these buildings and seeing the possibility, it's really, it's really gratifying. And I really want to thank Mark and Lisa for this work, and it's really exciting. And I should say Roberto is an actual parent, sorry.
Real life?
Yeah. Mr. Rodriguez is a parent at Lyceum, so I'd love to hear his perspective as well. But I, and not to say that we, I agree we should ask all the questions we have now, but I just wanted to give that perspective of a parent and someone who's been involved with a lot of parents and community members in talking about the renovations at the four schools.
I'd say that at the Lyceum community member, if you would just show me that you're going to add a new bus to, I think you're a bad guy. So you go in the gym on campus, and you go to the new access space, and then you're adding the classroom to a pre-k, and then accordingly, all the other lives. So yeah, I think this is transformative of that ability. I think this is going to have a little positive impact. I'm standing on it as well. And I would agree, yeah, this is not the bells and whistles that we would like. I think that if we had a line check, you'd be doing something even better than what option was. But we don't have a line check, we have a legal check. And we have some reaction checks along the way. And D-2 was probably what's going to get the respect for us, and out of the stadium. It's exciting. We'll look forward for it in the next month and October.
Thank you very, very much.